Yeah, welcome.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, last month, we had a budget workshop on June the first at 3:30. And we also had our regular board meeting. And I'm going to take each one of those sets of minutes separately for a vote. So I would first like to have a motion to adopt the minutes of our June 1st budget workshop.
So moved second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt the minutes of our June 1 meeting. Any questions or issues? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign. And you weren't here. Let the record reflect that Dr. Holsey is abstaining from voting. Our regular board meeting, again, was on June the first. And I need a motion to accept those minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved second.
Been moved and properly second that we adopt the minutes from the regular board meeting of June 1st. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, Dr. Holsey. The motion passes. Okay, we're back to Dr. Head with the chancellor's report.
Okay, I have a couple of updates and comments. One is the enrollment for the fall right now is up 8% over this time last year, which is good. But we still have 50 days left before the start of the semester, so we have a long way to go, but 8% is good. We budgeted 2.4%, two and a half, something, three? Three, okay. Secondly, is I want to recognize Gerald Napolos. He received the humanitarian award from the Latino Learning Center and was recognized at an event held at Minute Maid Park on Thursday, June the 15th. And... Gerald didn't know we were going to recognize him tonight.
Gerald, did you stand there about recognizing you?
Oh, it's Gerald.
All right, thank you.
So the tribute is to recognize and honor the great leaders for their philanthropic, philanthropic work, great heart and passion in helping local institutions and the general community within the city of Houston. And he was there with a number of other educational leaders. And I'm very pleased to announce that we were, Lone Star has been recognized by the Chronicle of Higher Education as one of the great colleges to work for, which is really great. The category is, we'll receive more information. There's actually, and I know that Beth is here, but we're going to, we have a special session with Beth. We've asked, they've asked for a news embargo until like next Monday, but we'll, we'll get you everything you need. So next Monday, you can... So the purpose of this was to recognize colleges that have been successful in creating great workplaces and to further, further research and understanding of the factors, dynamic, dynamics, and influences that have the most impact on organizational culture at higher education institutions. And I think the board knows, we've been working on this a lot here. So this is a two-part assessment process. One is an anonymous employee survey, and another one is the institutional audit, which captures information on demographics, policies, and practices. And we were recognized in five areas. One was confidence in senior leadership. They're not talking about me, they're talking about everybody here, and I think including the board. Diversity, facilities, which includes workspace and security, job satisfaction, and work-life balance. So we'll get you more information on that, so you can see it. But, and again, Beth, since you're the only reporter here, you'll have, you'll have first dibs at this, so I'm very proud of that. Again, we've worked very hard to make Lone Star a good place to work, so.
Yeah, I have a question. You may have said it already. Will there be a public announcement to the, to the general public? If so, how will that happen?
It'll come out next, we hope, next Monday on a news release, Monday or, where's Bill or, yeah. That's a, yes, sometime early Monday or Tuesday next week. Just make sure Beth is the first person. She's here, so, okay.
Got it.
Okay. So, yes, we'll do that and make sure you have a copy of it.
Yeah, well, I just think that's great for Lone Star to be recognized like that.
And that's it.
Okay, good. Okay. Okay, board members, do you have any comments about meetings, conferences that you've attended? Be they regular conferences, community meetings, and et cetera? Yes. Miriam, our new member, South.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to let you guys know that last month, I visited University Park. And I was very thrilled, extremely excited about that particular college. I've met with staff, faculty, students, and everyone is wonderful there. It seems like we're, there's, you know, like they have a family type of atmosphere and everyone's so proud of University Park. So I just want to say thank you for that, for giving me time for that, but also look forward to visiting the other campuses as well, to learn a little bit more about them as well. Thank you.
Anyone else?
You, you will find that there's some competition among the colleges, so when you go, you're...
You're kidding me.
I was looking at the expression over to see what was going to happen.
Well, you know, I have, I have a, their University Park pin, so.
Oops.
Favoritism.
Now you're committed, one of the things, you set yourself up, though, you're committed to see the others within a reasonable period of time. I think Holsey was it, Dr. Holsey?
Go ahead.
No, you first. So that it's not just, you know, the knot on the tail whenever we, just before we'll walk out the door, I wanted to say that I talked with Dr. Scott, Kyle Scott, yesterday. We just happened to both be at a triathlon in Montgomery in which he placed second in his age group and I placed first in mine. My group is the incredibly old people. But the, what I wanted to announce is, the reason Dr. Scott is not here today is because he is at his wife Bethany's last round of chemo for lymphoma, and all the recent tests show her to be all clear. And so, yeah, after, after this round, she'll go through some testing, and if those are all clear, they get to ring the bell that she is cancer-free. And so that's where he is, and I'm excited.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
And congratulations.
Gee, thanks.
Dr. Prober?
I, I just want to count our blessings. There's been so much protest these days by students, just everywhere in the country. And I think it's going to continue. We're in summer now, so people are home, but I think it'll resume again, and we'll hear the protest. But we don't have them here. Not really. We don't have them here. It's, it's what I call a zeitgeist, as it is, as it were, out there now, just running rampant, and it feeds upon itself and it continues. But we don't have it here. I think that's a testimony to how you folks run this place. It just happens that way. You run this place. I think it's also helped by the fact, an awful lot of this has to do with majority-minority issue matters on campus. And one of the things that we have going for us that precludes that kind of confrontation is that I, our school is about, what, 63, 64, 65, 60, and maybe 67% minority. And when you have such a high percentage, I think that preempts any kind of racial fighting on this campus. So things are going well here, and I just want to congratulate all of you for making this a nice place to work and a nice place for kids to go to school.
Thanks, Doc. Anyone else? Well, I had a couple of events, and I'll talk about one specifically, primarily because it made the, made the newspaper. And Gerald Napolos invited me to go with him on, what date was that, Gerald? Well, yeah, okay. I'm getting old, so I can't remember the date, but a week ago. And it was over in Akers Home, which is a, a low socioeconomic area. And the meeting was with the Harris County Sheriff, Houston policeman, police chief, and the district attorney, along with the director of the local FBI office. And so everybody was taking pictures and et cetera, so your stuff get on Facebook. And so, and I didn't put anything on Facebook, but other folks did. And they wanted to know what was talked about at the meeting. And I think the reasons for the inquiry was they thought that the meeting included only police bashing. And, and I had to tell them that there was, there was no police bashing at all by the citizens. It was about 300 people in attendance. And it was a matter, it was an informational meeting that I thought I am very, very impressed, especially with the Houston Police Chief, and also all of the other individuals. And they talked about issues that they had in, in the community, and issues that they were willing to correct. And all of the individuals there, they were completely enthused at the kind of leadership we have here in the Houston area. And when I told the individuals that, that's what happened, they were surprised. And I said, there was only one individual that brought up something negative, and it was something personal that he had done, that was currently being investigated. So Gerald, thanks for inviting me to attend along with you. I learned a lot, and, and it makes me even prouder, you know, that Lone Star is willing to send representatives to all kinds of meetings regardless of the expected outcome by the community. So keep up the good work. Okay, if no other comments, let's move right along. Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to speak to us tonight? Okay?
Good evening, Chancellor and Board, trustees. Thank you for your time, first of all. A little bit about myself, I have a lot to cover and not a lot of time, so. I, I'm a full-time battalion chief with the Woodlands Fire Department. I also work part-time for Lone Star in the Fire Science Division. I teach as a field instructor at the academy. And I'm also a student at Lone Star. So I'm wearing a few different hats tonight, so forgive me if this sounds self-serving, but I use some of my circumstances here to kind of make a point. I noticed recently Columbia Southern University visited one of our fire stations and brought to our attention the programs that they use to recruit. It's really geared towards public servants. It sounds really good. Basically, when everything's done, you get an education for free, if you get reimbursement, tuition, or tuition-reimbursedment through your fire department, which, which I do. That did bring to attention, that made me kind of look at some things that I noticed with Lone Star, is that I enrolled as a student, not as a, as, I'm sorry, I enrolled as a firefighter, not as a student, which in the state of Texas, my tuition is waived, and which, excuse me, I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry, I've never done this before. So, so, and when I enrolled as a firefighter, the state of Texas waived my tuition, but I still have fees and books. And for me, the fees and books are quite expensive, and I have some of the figures here, so the way I'm currently enrolled now, my tuition was waived, but by the end of completing my courses, I still have $770 in fees. And at a high, at the high end, my books could cost up to $707 to complete five courses. It's not that big of a deal for me, but what I'm here to, to see is if we could maybe come up with a program to reduce the cost for our current public servants and some of maybe the cadets that are coming out of the academy to help them finish their degree. I'm just now going back to finish mine. I'd like to see some of our cadets finish theirs a lot earlier. People in my field who go for specialty, police, fire, EMS, a lot of times, we don't finish our degrees until later on in life, and a lot of it has to do with cost. I know as an employee, as a part-time employee, it says that I can have my tuition and fees waived through the college. But reading into this policy, it says that I have to complete 24 consecutive pay periods. Well, the way the Fire Academy runs, we never work a full year at a time. It's only fall semester, so we always have the summer off, so there's no way for me to collect 24 consecutive paychecks to fall under this program to have tuition or fees waived. So that's one of the deals I would like to see addressed, if we could maybe change the wording of the eligibility to have that, have that changed. I'm currently, I've been employed there since 2010, so anybody that's been employed there just the past year has the benefits that I would not have, being employed there for almost seven years now, just for that, just because of the consecutive pay periods. I don't only bring problems, I do bring solutions. I would like to see if we could possibly come up with a program to maybe help public servants and our students stay in the, in the degree programs, maybe reduce the fees or reduce the book costs, maybe even do a loner program for any public servant or anybody that would like to come in and finish up their degree. I wouldn't expect it to go through, I know that Lone Star now does a bachelor's, but I would like maybe to help them finish up their associate's degree so they can go on and finish up a higher degree. Actually finished pretty early, I'm kind of glad. I guess that's, that's all I have unless y'all have any questions for me.
Well, one of the things I will say, we can't address the issue tonight.
Absolutely, I understand that. Yes, I understand that.
And I hope I'm not speaking prematurely. Knowing Steve Head the way that I know him, he is going to take the issues that you raised tonight, take a look at those issues, and make a determination one way or the other. Can't guarantee anything.
Absolutely not.
But within a reasonable period of time, I'm sure Dr. Head or one of the staff members will review your proposal or request and provide that feedback to the public.
Appreciate that.
Did I misstate anything, Doc?
I just need to make sure we've got his contact.
Okay. I can leave a business card or something, okay? And I would be more than willing to help out in any way that I can. Again, I didn't want this to sound self-serving, but I have a lot of ideas, and I'd love to, at some point in time, to be able to help you all out, maybe put a program together.
We'd like to.
Well, thank you for coming, and appreciate you.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am John Bergduff, proudly representing the American Federation of Teachers. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking with you tonight. There are two topics that we would like to discuss this evening, one very briefly and one at greater length. Our first topic relates to the new board meeting time, start time of 5 o'clock, and the impact on citizens requesting to speak. When the schedule change was first discussed at the March board meeting, placing the closed session at 5 o'clock and the open session beginning no earlier than 6:00, board members Scott and Mario and board chair Smith raised the concern that citizens should be allowed to sign up to speak anytime before 6:00. Chancellor Head indicated that in his judgment, that would be the case. However, since the schedule has been changed, we've been informed that citizens must sign up before 5:00, since that is the official start of the meeting. That unfortunately negates the board's hope that community members should not have to sit and wait through closed session. We would like to respectfully ask the board for clarification of their intent regarding the sign-up deadline. Our second topic tonight relates to a collection of board policy revisions related to Senate Bill 4 that will receive a first reading tonight. This bill, which passed the legislature and has been signed into law, prohibits a local entity or campus police department from adopting or enforcing a policy prohibiting or limiting the enforcement of immigration laws. It also states that such an entity or police department may not prohibit or materially limit a peace officer from inquiring into the immigration status of a person under lawful detention or arrest, from reporting such information to federal immigration authorities, or from assisting or cooperating with federal immigration authorities as reasonable and necessary. Senate Bill 4, as you know, is highly controversial. Police departments across the state warned that public safety would be compromised if minority communities became afraid to cooperate with police. Civil rights groups worried this bill would legitimize racial profiling. Cities and colleges have decried the usurpation of local control of public safety decisions. For these reasons, a broad array of organizations, including Texas AFT, lobbied against the bill, and a number of entities, including the city of Houston, have filed suit to overturn the law now that it has passed. We have no doubt that the policy revisions proposed tonight do not in any way represent a statement of opinion, one way or another, on the part of the college regarding the merits of these provisions, but merely acknowledged, acknowledged that, as of this moment, Senate Bill 4 is in fact the law of the state. As such, it is not our intention tonight to debate the provisions of the law, but to simply ask a question about the necessity of these policy changes. State laws apply whether or not they are acknowledged by college policy. As best we can tell, Senate Bill 4 does not require a college to adopt any new policies, but simply not to adopt or enforce policies that contravene the requirements of the bill. Lone Star College already has a generic policy in place that could be used to stop any policy or procedure that the board or administration might consider that would violate Senate Bill 4. Lone Star College Policy 1. D. 1. 1. 10 states, and I quote, "No board policy or chancellor's procedure remains operative if it conflicts with applicable state or federal law, as determined by the Office of the General Counsel, the Chancellor, or the Board of Trustees," unquote. So our question then is simply, are the policy revisions proposed today necessary? Does not existing policy already ensure that state law will be followed? We believe that this question is important for two reasons. First, with the vigorous legal challenges now underway, the possibility exists that this law could be overturned, in which case the policies would have to be amended again. Second, and, and far more importantly, we are concerned that having these policies on the books would heighten the fear that many of our students now feel about their status in the campus community. Although the law is the law, perhaps we can avoid adding to the anxiety it causes if we simply let our policies stand as they are currently written, rather than adding the language proposed in today's first reading. Thank you very much for your time.
John, one of the things that's going to happen later on, our council is going to talk about the policy revision.
Okay.
And maybe some of your questions, concerns will be answered there. And with regards to the first part of your presentation, again, all I can say at this one time, we'll take a look at that particular request and provide feedback on it.
Great, I appreciate that very much. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Okay. Okay, at this particular time, we're at the consent agenda, and there are 13 items on the consent agenda. We are going to pull item 7. We're going to withdraw item 9 and item 13.
So when you say pull, we're going to consider that separately?
Yeah, right, 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 got you. Well, it's 9 and 13.
And then withdraw 9 and 13.
Yeah, well, 13, 13 being withdrawn.
Okay, and then 9 would be withdrawn.
9 withdrawn.
Right.
And 7 is going to be, will be... Okay. I think we probably ought to do that, is, is this a good point, let Mario talk about the policy revision.
Well, normally, you would vote on this and then come...
Okay.
Back on the, that's next up on the policy report.
The policy is just a first reading, right?
Yes, yes, uh-huh, uh-huh. Okay, okay. We'll do the consent agenda first. Okay, I need a motion on the consent agenda for items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12.
So moved second.
It's been moved and properly second that we adopt items that just mentioned. All of those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Opposeds? Okay, good, thank you. And Dr. Head, are you going to talk about items, item 7? Item 7 is an item that was pulled.
Or separated.
Separated.
Separated, right.
So you have to vote on those.
Okay, okay.
So item 7 is about toolsets that we were purchasing for Lone Star College North Carolina students in the automotive technology program. And I, I just want to remind the board that funds for this were set aside from some of our international programs, specifically the Jakarta Project. And so we put this into Lone Star College Promise. This is in addition to the other money that we had. And the purpose of this was, we had not set aside money specifically for workforce students, so this is, this is the reason for that. And what's happening, especially out of the automotive program and some of our workforce programs, when they start, they need equipment upfront, is part of the expectation, and these toolsets are expensive. So we're trying to help as many students get off on the right foot as we can. So what I'm hoping is this, our foundation continues to grow, and when we generate funds from some of our other enterprises, then we can take the money, like we've been doing, and give that back to the students. But I want to make sure that you knew that this was part of Lone Star College Promise. This is in addition to the other money, and this was designated for workforce students. And the purpose of it, again, was for expensive toolsets that most of them, we do not want them starting out with a $3,000 or $4,000 bill, right when they get out of, right when they don't need those bills, we want to, we want to try to help as many as we can. So that's that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Head. Board members, any questions, Dr. Head? If not, I need a motion for item 7 and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and properly second that we adopt item 7. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Thank you. Mario, would you like to talk about the first reading of the policy change? I guess it's a wrong question. Would you talk about the first? Yeah.
All right, so I guess I'll start with many of the items that Professor Bergduff kind of covered, kind of stole my thunder a little bit. But essentially, all we're doing here is clarifying our policy as we believe, or as I believe, is required under SB 4. And so specifically, you know, we can have a lot of discussions about what the law should be and what it should say, and what our political inclinations are, and so on and so forth. Unfortunately, as the college's chief legal officer, I don't have that luxury. My responsibility is to write these, or draft these policies for you as I believe the law is, not as I may personally or even professionally believe the law should be. And so, for better or for worse, SB 4 is the law. I believe we owe it to our police officers and our students to give adequate notice of what is and is not a civil rights violation, what is and is not an ethical standard violation by our police officers. Our police officers have, we have an obligation to our police officers to let them know that we intend to follow the letter of SB 4, and that, and that's essentially all we're doing. And I understand Professor Bergduff's point about, you know, why, because I'm the one that drafted that section that he cited. And I can tell you that it's been my experience that when you spell things out beforehand, before issues arise, it's always better than if you rely on sort of vague, vague, I guess, not statutes, but vague policies. And so I want to be very clear that all we're doing here is, and all, all I'm doing is doing the best job that I can to make sure that we carry out SB 4's wishes, to the extent that people have sort of political objections to it, there is a democratic process out there, that at least one iteration of it has played out. I invite those folks to take up those democratic processes, but for better or for worse, right now, the law is the law, like Professor Bergduff said, and my job as the chief legal officer is to make sure that this community is informed about what that law is. And I think that a more specific section does that better than a vague section that we will have to interpret once an issue arose. And like Professor Bergduff said, this is a very controversial issue. There are very sort of impassioned people on both sides of it, and I think it's better for us as a community if we sort of lay the ground rules of what will be considered a civil rights violation and ethical violation, those kind of things on the... civil rights violation and ethical violation, those kind of things on the forefront before those things arise, so it doesn't look like we're playing fast and loose with the interpretations of our policies. And so that's, that's essentially what we're up to. And I'll take any questions.
Mario, I, I read the statement that you've written here as a positive. Let me read the words again. Nothing in the policy section limits a campus peace officer from inquiring into the immigration status of a person, and here are the operative words, "under lawful detention or arrest." What that says to me is that our police officers are not going to ask students, even immigrants, for their papers. They're not going to stop anybody and say, "You look Hispanic, prove to me you're a citizen." What this has said is we're not going to do that.
No, sir, we're not going to do that, and I can tell you that my interpretation would be that, that would be probably a violation of our policies.
To do that.
Yes, sir.
We have, we have roughly fifteen hundred undocumented students on this campus.
Yes, sir.
Well, in a sense, what you're saying here is, they will remain on this campus unless they are, unless they're under arrest for a crime or potential crime.
Right, and so, my, again, for better or for worse, I'm not the chief political officer, I'm the chief legal officer. I will do no further than the law and my duty requires me to. And so, the detention and arrest is a limiting factor on when police officers are allowed to ask that information, so you're absolutely right. However, you wouldn't know that someone is an immigrant until you asked them for those papers, so you can't really make a policy or a procedure that says, hey, we're only going to ask immigrants.
I have on my refrigerator a sign that states my view on asking students here if they have papers, and my sign reads, "Jesus did not have papers."
Okay, I...
Okay, Mario.
Is that all?
Appreciate you, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Well, I guess, any, any other board members have questions?
I mean, I don't have a question, but I do have a statement, I mean, it's, I just, you know, we're, I guess, what we'd want to say and, and communicate out there is that students should not be, should not feel afraid to attend school.
I'm, I'm aware of no instance where a police officer has asked someone for their papers at Lone Star College. And if I were, I'd tell you that, and I would tell you that that person better be under detention or arrest, or else we're going to be violating SB Four. Or, I'm sorry, we're, we're going to be violating our policies, because with...
...misunderstandings, if there's any out there, so that's why.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Okay, at this point, we're at our financials section.
So tonight, in your book, you have the monthly financial statements for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, period ending May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Also included is the quarterly investment report for the same period ending May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. If you turn to the first page, actual revenues as a percent of budget currently, as, as of the end of May, we are at eighty-seven point two percent, and this is trending significantly higher, as you can see, to prior years. This is primarily due to our, our forecasted tax revenues exceeding the budgeted amount by seven point nine million, because the budget did not include new property or properties under dispute. We do have an offset to this in student revenues, which are up slightly from FY sixteen. However, they are coming in below what was budgeted, we had budgeted at three percent growth, and currently, the student revenues are coming in below that, so that is currently projected to be under budget by four point two million. Turning to page two, actual expenditures as a percent of budget, there we are at sixty-nine point eight percent compared to the same period prior years. We are pretty much in line with where we have been in prior years. We are getting close to the end of the fiscal year, so every month, the finance office does send out reports to all of the presidents and the vice chancellors, reporting on where their budget stands, so we are keeping a very close eye that we do not go over budget in air, any area as we near the end of the fiscal year. Turning to page three is the statement of revenues and expenditures report. There, in the first column, you can see the budget as it was adopted, and then the following column is our forecasted variances, and this is where you can see that the combination of the increased tax revenues and some of the decreases in the student revenues, we do have a net, it projected increase in total revenues of four point seven million. And then you can also see that we are currently projecting expenditures to be under budget by one point seven million. All of this combined puts us currently at forecasted cash reserves for the end of this fiscal year at fourteen point nine percent. I do personally think we might see some additional, uh, savings from expenditures that we currently, to be conservative, are not projecting yet, so I do hope that we end north of fourteen point nine percent, but that is currently what we are projecting for these revenue and expenditure.
Sixteen.
What, we're shooting for sixteen or fifteen?
Sixteen in the FY eighteen budget.
Right. Yeah, the FY eighteen budget is currently being built to end fiscal year eighteen at sixteen percent. This fourteen point nine is currently what we're projecting to end this current fiscal year, FY seventeen.
Got you, thank you.
Yes. And so the last thing I would like to note is, speaking of the budget, that is in front of the board next month, so just a reminder on the schedule there, Monday, July fourteenth, is when we are going to release the electronic version of the proposed budget. It's going to be the budget detail, and then Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, is when a printed version will be made available to all board members, so that'll be the budget detail. Everyone will have that a full week, the electronic version, a week and a half, ahead of the August third board meeting, what, where that budget will be voted on.
So, what are we doing? Are we sending the budget to them? I guess I'm, one of you, Helen, or Jennifer, one of the two of you, what are we doing? We're going to make that available electronically, the draft, or the final, what we think is the final version, and then we'll print?
Yes. So, yes.
Send that to them, so that they can review the hard copy if they want it?
Mm-hmm.
How long is the budget? Is this the entire budget?
Yeah, this is the budget detail, so, sorry, it'll probably be about that thick.
How many pages is it?
About that thick.
So, a couple of hundred pages, that long? I guess my question is, is that, do they want a printed copy, or they want electronic, or, or they opt out, or we'll send it to them if they don't say anything differently? We're going to send everybody the electronic copy for sure. I'm not sure everybody, okay, okay.
No.
I mean, if you do, you do, if you don't...
And, I mean, for that week, week and a half, that you have the electronic or print version ahead of board agenda, please, at any time during that week, feel free to reach out with me with questions, or if you just want me to walk you through what's in that budget detail, I am happy to do so.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Anything on building the ground?
The report is included in the...
Oh, okay, got you, yeah. All right. I know you're disappointed, but this, that's it.